The October 13, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Cannon Falls will come to order. Roll call.
Johnson.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Novak.
Here. Agenda is before us unless there are any additions, subtractions, motion to approve tonight's agenda. Don't all jump in at once.
I approve.
Douglas, move, second?
Second.
Not seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So move. Minutes from September 8, 2025.
Motion approved, minutes?
Motion by Novak. Second by Douglas. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So move. Public input, and everybody who wanted public input had a chance to sign up. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the Planning Commission. Public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in length. Each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topic relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the hearing. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at public hearing. Planning Commission will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. We have two people signed up, Anne.
My name is, it always happens when I get up here, Anne Bestcheck-Bosemeyer, 6658 296th Street East in Cannon Falls. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, I appreciate all the many hours the Planning Commission and council members and the city staff have devoted to understanding this proposed data center. There's an endless hole, black hole of information goes on forever and ever about data centers to digest. And we've finally gotten to the point here where there's some tangible benefits for the community, and these were presented by Trac at the work session that was held on October 9. Unfortunately, these benefits only became known just weeks before the application deadline. With such a short timeline, what engagement can citizens have to be informed of, understand and question the benefits that were presented? And also to be able to ask and communicate their concerns and comments to the council members? Trac has been working with the city and the city council for 10 months, and they have only recently been able to put together the picture of its financial benefits. Shouldn't the citizens be given the opportunity to review these benefits? This is the time for transparency. Put the financial benefits out there to the public in an open forum. Let's talk back and forth so questions can be asked and answered, and not just answered on Trac's technology park page. Let the citizens decide the trajectory of Cannon Falls. Let them decide if they want a hyperscale data center in their backyard with the benefits it'll bring to their community, or if they want to maintain a small-town ambiance with slower growth. I ask you, I'm asking you to recommend to put this project on hold for at least 90 days. I don't know if that's within your purview or scope, but I'm just asking to get it put on hold for 90 days. There is no hurry on this, and if, when it does, or if it goes through, it will forever change Cannon Falls. So the citizens need to have input. They need to decide what they want their city to look like. Oh, and do you have time left?
I have about 30 seconds.
Okay. So, I still have external concerns. There's no end user. Trac can promise anything they want, but we still have a lot of unanswered unknowns, still at this point. The AUAR that was completed for this project is comparable to other projects that were in North Ban, Cannon, Lakeville, and they are currently in lawsuit over those because of the vague project description. That meets your AUAR also. Rosemont has a data center. Trac applied to build another one. They were denied. If it's so great for the community, why did Rosemont refuse to have a second one? And why can't we have a town meeting? Why can't we have a town meeting? And data centers are like rabbits. One comes in, they're going to multiply. And FYI, you know developers are going up and down Highway 52, talking to farmers to get more land. They're getting, they're going to the tractors in the harvest field.
Thank you. We have a mic. Mike, right?
I just signed up with my wife. Saboy.
I'll take his place. I just came in from the harvest thing.
May she? I'll go up with her.
Is there any other signups, though? That was it?
I'm Nora Felton. I farm outside in the flats, and my concern is the water, wastewater treatment plant that, where the water's going to get treated, and whether that water can come back to recharge our aquifer and not get sent down the river. We don't have any Delta Schmelt that we could even say that we're using the water for, so I'm hoping that we can find a way to reuse it, get it back out into the fields. And if you don't recharge our aquifer, how much water, do we know how much water it takes? Do we know how much steam is coming up and how that might affect? The other thing, I also had a chance to look at your alternative ES, EIS. It appears that there's a lot of places in there that basically say to be determined. When I covered the Randolph City Council, working for the Beacon, there's a lot of things I learned, and one of those is that it's very dangerous to set precedents. And if you allow a company to come in without any specifics in its design, or what you're asking for, or what's required, you realize that in the future, people won't have, will say that you're going to have to allow them to go ahead and build whatever they want to without any specifics as well, because now you've set the precedent of allowing somebody to come in without any information about how tall, how big, how much, because all of this is yet to be determined. And so I would just caution you that unless you get more specifics about what's coming in, you're opening the floodgates to whoever wants to come in in the future. Thank you.
That was all of public input. We hope our public input is over. Move on to item number six, discussion and vote. Item A, Trac's conditional use permit plan unit development. Izzy is going to speak to us.
All right, so this is just a continuance of the planned unit development item that we talked about on September 8. So again, just to reiterate, the planned unit development helps the city to get more stringent parameters on the development. So things like setbacks, landscape buffers, landscaping, architectural design, building height, fencing, things like that. So that's all within that PUD plan that you have in your packet. Just to note, we did get it updated to the final PUD plan, and I will just note two changes, or the landscaping, so the timing of landscaping, requiring 25% of the trees to be planted prior to site development, and then also a change regarding the solar exemption within that PUD. So again, this is just reiterating the item from September 8 where we held the public hearing. So this is a time for discussion, if need be, and then a decision.
Questions, or John, if you want to?
Nope, that was a brief summary.
Questions from the Planning Commission. We had robust discussion on this a month ago. Developer has come back with a couple of changes that I think were requested, and we appreciate that.
Is it possible? Go ahead, Brian. Is it possible for the developer, or for Trac, I guess, to come up and explain this rooftop solar exemption program again? Because I, I'm not sure between the chillers on top and everything else, how much can you fit on a roof? I mean, that's...
Yeah, and this goes back to, we had originally said that rooftop solar would not be required for any buildings, because typically the chillers do go on top and the two don't work together. But at Diane's request, she didn't want to just necessarily make that option off the table altogether. So we revised the language to say, you know, should the city and the developer determine that solar is appropriate on the rooftop, then that door is still open. So it might be that a guard gate could have solar, an administrative building could have solar, or there could be a myriad of other reasons. So it doesn't shut the door on solar on the rooftops, but it doesn't require solar on the rooftops. And this is just kind of like, should the city decide at some point to go through a code amendment and require that all future commercial or industrial buildings need to have rooftop solar? We need, want to make sure that that's not a requirement on this project.
Other comments, questions, concerns?
I guess I would just want to, I can add for the context for this meeting and a lot of the follow-ups. So there were, you know, subsequent work session last week, we went over a lot of the details. We did go over some questions at the, at a following council meeting, related some of the concerns that were brought up regarding the water use and that, and that, you know, speaking to what the last public forum speaker said, you know, not having specifics is a dangerous precedent to set. And I do believe that these PUD agreements, the conditional use agreement, the PUD, the process in which we're going through is very much setting the table about the very specific items related to this project, like establishing the building heights, establishing the setbacks, establishing a landscaping plan, upscaling the requirements for building design for areas that are typically built into an industrial, an industrial zone land. So there's a lot happening in this agreement that is providing those specifics and is setting a future of, as a development moves forward, you know, this is what we can consider. And most importantly, I think, going into the infrastructure side of the plan, it is giving us the ability to evaluate what is being proposed, can make considerations about what they're asking for in terms of resources from the, from the city, and whether or not we have the feasibility to provide those resources. So that's trying to align the fit of these towards the projects with what we have for our community and the resources that we can, we can deliver for those, that infrastructure, so that we have the consideration of what we need in our community for not only at the moment of the application, for what we need for the future. That was a huge component of why we did our water and wastewater studies, to evaluate that, that water usage and where it fits within, you know, our plans moving forward. So I still want to kind of emphasize, reemphasize, our position is that we do feel the infrastructure needs, the water, wastewater utilization that we were discussing, that are, you know, future part of the development agreements, and I can speak more to those if there are any questions or I intend to later in the meeting. But those are, those are being addressed.
Thank you. And I'll put a little aside also, I have very consistently, from the beginning of this process, expressed my opinion that I did believe a data center was in the best use of, you know, property or industrial use in our town. And I have consistently voted not to have data centers as a conditional use in this one, you know, after they apply. However, going forward, the majority of this board, and I'm assuming the majority of the city council board will approve this CUP, and it is our job then to support the majority and go along. And so my, my goal from here on in is to look at all of these subsequent agreements and make sure I think they're in the best interest of the town. And I, you know, with the work that's been done on this PUD, I am very supportive of moving forward with it. Any other comments, questions?
I guess, I'll try to keep this on topic, I guess, but I think, I think pushback from the public, I think that makes sense. I think it's an unknown. I think Cannon Falls itself has not done much in the last 25 years for growth. I just think that's kind of where we're at and where we've been. I think without pushback, I think if we just would have said yes to Trac right away, I don't think we'd be in a very good position as we are today. I think we're in a very good position based off of our pushback. I think our staff has done a good job. I think we've gotten benefits for this community that were given to us right off the bat. I think we've negotiated our best, or they've negotiated their best. I'm comfortable moving forward with this. That's where I was a week ago, and I'm a lot more comfortable today, so.
I guess I'd have to agree with Chris. I went and I've talked with the city, I've talked with Trac, I've talked with a lot of people, and it just seems like just to get this going doesn't guarantee that there's going to be a data center going in. Basically, we got to get the development going to see where we go to get this hands. So I'm thinking, we do need to think about the city future, and the city future is, I don't think farming. I don't think it's going to be, for the city to maintain itself, we need to broaden our horizons a little bit. And I think, based on what I've found out about data centers, and I've heard the negative and I've heard the positive, I think in this situation, we need to at least start the first step in progress and see where we need to go.
If not, I would entertain a motion to recommend to the city council for approval, Resolution 2025-09 for the PUD.
So moved. Motion approved.
Moved by Novak, second by Fox, further discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So moved. Item B, variances to certain provisions of the final plan stage under Section 152.153 JD to defer submission of final architectural drives until site plan review stage for each phase of development to defer submission of final engineering plans and specifications for streets, drainage utilities, and other public improvements until the site plan review stage for each phase, and to extend the one-year construction commencement requirement to accommodate the long-term phase buildout of project.
So again, these are the variances from September 8. As Diane just stated, those were the three variances that Trac is applying for. Again, they are being applied for due to the phased development that this project is, so being able to align with procedural requirements of the city's development process along with the phased development. So these variances help to align those two entities together to create a smoother process.
I guess, Bill perhaps, or maybe John, do any of these variances put us at a disadvantage? I mean, I get why they're asking for a phased construction, whatnot, and delaying of construction past year. Makes sense to me, it just, it doesn't put us at a disadvantage at all, in your opinion?
No disadvantage. I think by not doing them, we would be, because then we would be forced to try to, we're forced to either deny something, or slow the process down, or stop the process where it's, when we know, well in advance that these things are going to take, just the lead time for equipment and orders and the size and scope of what this development is, just do not align with what our standards have been. Not to say that, you know, this is opening the door for all projects, so, you know, have this ability to have this exception. They would have to, you know, meet, kind of muster that same level of scope for even us to consider. This isn't just a blanket, variances are not, variances are very much case by case. In this, and in this case, there's a lot of reasons to bring them into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Intertain a motion to send Resolution 2025-10 to city council for approval.
Motion approved.
So that moves.
Second.
On second, further discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So move. We move on to item C, preliminary plat to create two develop lots as well as an outlot that will be dedicated to the city for the construction of a water storage tank and to facilitate preliminary design and construction of off-site water and wastewater facilities needed to serve the site.
Again, same preliminary plat from September 8. The preliminary plat meets the requirements for the city for water, off-site water, wastewater, and dimensions of the lot. So we already held the public hearing on September 8, so looking for any discussion that you may have on the preliminary plat, and then a decision on this item as well.
And just on the, I know the engineer had added a couple of comments on that in terms of little things like the week proposed on the outlot, and all that.
Yep, there are a few conditions from the city engineer that are on the resolution for this, and then also comments from the Dakota County Plat Commission. So went through both of those processes to get outside information for that plat. So those would be conditions upon this resolution.
Further discussion?
Couple, couple things I noticed, I guess. So first off, the provision for the well? Is there a provision there that, so it does say like, hey, in terms of if there's an emergency, Trac can use the well? Is there a provision there that says like they can use the well until it's, because they have to pull a permit with the DNR to use that well in an emergency? Is there a provision that basically says, once that emergency's done, boom, water's shut off from the well?
So, yeah, I believe the process would be they'd have to get the approvals in advance with DNR, just to change the use, because right now it's an agricultural-based well. So they, they'd have to apply for that well in advance, just to say, hey, these are the conditions in which we would, we would use the well. So there would be parts of those elements in that decision-making that DNR would consider, like, okay, what, what are you going to use this for? How much water? What are the circumstances that happen? So if, when our emergency circumstances, then that, the only time they can, they can use it based on our other agreements are if we cannot provide them water. So then, once we can provide them water again, the well, there's no water. I mean, it's not that it would be captive perpetuity, because I think there's conditions that right over the life of this project where that might happen. But I don't foresee us leaving it on when it's not...
Could I kind of ask a follow-up to that?
Go ahead.
I know we've got a limit of 43 million gallons per year.
That, yeah, that is what's in the development agreement as requested.
So, but if, if, because I think Thursday meeting, Bill had said something about, we do have the ability, if they exceed that, to shut it off. That wouldn't trigger that emergency use of the well, would it then, or would it?
There would, yeah, so I would say, speak to circumstances in which they're exceeding their allotted amount, and we, we move to disconnect them. I think there would be, there is probably lots of circumstances going on, so likely a drought situation in which DNR is, that well use is going to be low on the priority, and they would probably not be allowed to do it. So in terms of a hypothetical scenario where those things could happen, now, I think if they, if the end user, not a client, we track, but if the end user were to say, well, we want, just want to use whatever we want, we're going to push the city into a situation in which we, you know, we use more, that wouldn't work either, because they're limited to less than, and based on our agreements with the township, they're limited to 41 million gallons a year is like the max, or 40, 40-point-something million gallons a year is the max allocation they could even apply for. So their, their commitment was to commit to using less than what's already being pulled out of that, that appropriation permit today. So it doesn't really, it wouldn't make sense, I guess, in terms of logic, other than not to have to pay it, but then they're putting themselves at huge risk in terms of the DNR coming saying the same thing. Like, we said in that meeting the other day, that we would work through lots of ways in which we're going to get compliance, and then in order to not exceed the allocated amounts in terms of, you know, fines and whatever, but if, if they're running up and using way more than we ever have, like, we have that ability to turn it off.
Yeah, I got one more here, and stay with me, I guess. In Exhibit B, it says that we're going to figure out our 4th Street sewer upgrade by January 1, 2030. But then in B4, it says we need to get all the sewage out to, or the water, wastewater stuff out to them no later than August 19, 2029. Does that, does that make sense?
So, yeah.
Because the dates don't line up, but...
Yeah, we can, we can speak that. So there's kind of two different parts of this project. Okay.
Two, two projects. The 4th Street project is a city project. The other extension, the 2029 one, is a developer-led project, I'm sorry, developer-paid-for project that we will be doing as a city meeting. We will publicly bid, and they will pay the city back. So two separate projects.
Yeah, and so in terms of 4th Street, we're already doing, that was what we talked about the last meeting.
Right, but I would, I'm just assuming we're going to tie into 4th Street with this.
Yes, yes.
But it's okay that we're getting down to 4th Street later, then...
We're already, and we've already made the considers, the plans that we're developing for 4th Street are upsizing the pipe in order to accommodate this expansion. So we're, we're doing that now.
Yep.
And we're doing that now in, not specifically on the assumption that this project was going to be done, but because the relative costs versus what we have for resources in order to pay for it made sense to do with that.
No, I just want to make sure the dates lined up and that was...
Yes.
Other comments, clarifications needed?
Yeah, John, just checking, or even the city, on this new water storage tower, is it going to be benefit people besides just the data center area?
Yes, that's correct. So the, yeah, so the water storage tower will be a whole citywide, part of our whole citywide distribution system. So it will have, it will be located on their site because they're dedicating the land, land for it, and that land dedication makes sense relative to where you would cite a tower like this, and how it would serve the surrounding community. So that makes a lot of sense. It's covered, kind of covers a couple, couple areas for us. So that's why it's a benefit to have the land dedicated, so we can put this tower on. So, but it will, water from that tower will flow to all, all parts of that zone of the city. So, you know, water towers don't serve 100% of the city. The distribution systems have various zones in which they, they operate out of, but this one will, you know, serve primarily the industrial park area on the north end of town, which, you know, does hold our biggest water users. And right now, I would say that one of the most beneficial parts of this is specifically on the risk mitigation, that having that tower will definitely give us the better, a better means to provide fire protection for that area. We can provide fire protection. We do have the flows going to that, that, that zone, but they are coming through booster pumps that are coming off of the wells. And those booster pumps, when they're running for regular use, they're, those are fine. They operate just, you know, no problems with, in terms of providing pressure, delivering water to those end users. If ever there is the need, and that we had to, you know, fight a fire and use the hydrants to do so, we would flip on a different pump that has such high pressure that if they're not opening all, essentially all of the fire hydrants in that area of town, the pipe, every main pipe would burst, you know? So then you don't worry about it, because you're addressing the bigger issue crisis at hand of putting out the fire, and then you fix the pipes later. But that... But that, that in and of itself is something we can't test for. We, we can't turn that pump on at, at one point and make sure it works. So by doing this, definitely, you know, creates a situation where that fire suppression ability through our, our hydrants and everything that we do provide in town definitely is much more redundant and much more, I think, competent in terms of our ability to, to serve that, that area.
And isn't that area the progression, isn't that where the city is looking to move also in the future for commercial or...
Yes, in, in our current comp plan, which obviously is something we're going to discuss later at a council, at the council level, but in terms of updating that next year, but likely in terms of the infrastructure that we're developing, yes. I mean, industrial use, if needed and demand, demand is there, would grow that direction. So that tower would, would definitely be beneficial in facilitating future development towards the north and northeast areas of our, of our community.
If I can add one thing, another big part that maybe goes unnoticed is, we only have one water main going out to our industrial area. And with this project part, because Tract wants redundancy themselves, so that water main they're putting in not only serves them, really it serves our whole industrial area. So now we have redundancy. That's a big benefit to the city. It's maybe been kind of a minor item, but to me, it's, it's a really big item. So it's a, it's a real big benefit to the city to have that water main.
Those, those risk factors of like, the, the fire suppression pump, single source for, for water mains are definitely pieces that, on our side, they, they, they matter. They matter quite a bit. And they may not be noticeable, but it's, it's things that we consider, you know, when we're talking about projects and developments.
And just on an aesthetic viewpoint, is it going to look like the one up on the hill? Do you have, do we have an idea?
Have all the ability to design it however we need to, right now, our commitment is a million gallon tower, but even that will, you know, we'll have to assess and look at what the, what the need, need is, growth potentials are, you know, the various factors that go into it. I think with the, the resources that would be aligned with this development agreement to construct that tower, it gives us a lot of flexibility to, to, you know, build something that will look aesthetically appealing and serve, and, and have, you know, very good function as well.
Other comments, concerns? Just both for... Okay, we've got, is there a motion to recommend to the City Council Resolution 2025-11 with those stipulations, amendments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who's second? No, okay. So a motion by not, second by Nobak. Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So moved. Information time, no action required. The development, application, development agreement, is that John or...
I can introduce, so no action is required for this. It is just an introduction of the development agreement, so no approval or denial after, after this. I will defer to John to kind of give all the details specific for the development agreement.
All right. Thank you. So we did add this memo tonight, we'll leave, you know, copy, and it'll go into the record as well. So this does outline a, on a broader, higher level, with some specifics in terms of the actual allocation requests, the water, wastewater, and the other items that are, are needed for infrastructure from, related to this development agreement, as well as financially, who would be paying for those improvements? What timing of when those agreements are going to be paid for or started in terms of construction? So really, this was a, a big part that we didn't have a lot of these, we had the framework for a lot of this, but we didn't have a lot of the final details in, in place at the time in which we were, we, we discussed the, the other land use elements at the last meeting. So it is, I think it is fortunate for the city and the Planning Commission and the council to have, you know, worked to more of these details by the time that we were making these approvals that, that just, the recommendations for approval that just happened. So I do want to specify specifically, you know, with Table 1, what we tried to outline in our studies were what were our ability to provide water without having to make major infrastructure improvements. So we wanted to figure out what is our capacity today? How much water do we have? How much are we using? How much can we increase in terms of that, that service to, to users? And then on the backend, how much can we take in in terms of wastewater and treat within the, the existing plant capacities and permitted capacities that we, we have based on our agreements that, that are in place? So, and then back to what Tract was looking for in terms of the allocations, they're very much proposing this to be coming in unfazed, phased timelines. So that was back to that, kind of that variance conversation, and why these things kind of need to have, we need a little bit more runway in order to kind of get things proposed. So while the final number for a full phased-out development is 43 million gallons a year, which, as we saw, I think, one, one good example that was new, that was presented in the work session last week, was that equates to within a six-mile radius, less than 1% of the appropriated use in terms of water used from any sort of DNR appropriated purpose, that's the city canals, A-wells, residential wells, any other user. It's less than 1% of the total overall water use in six-mile radius of the, of the site. It is 1% of the use of the actual water use from what's gets reported, reported back to the DNR. That's on the, that's with the full capacity. And that isn't even in the plans and timeline for 10 years. So that's a 2035 target date for, for that. So, and while you do see the numbers in the first column being, going from 165,000 gallons per day to 100, 1.35 million gallons per day, these are max. These are the absolute kind of worst-case scenarios, ability for them to draw water in, in times when we're seeing extreme needs or having extreme needs for, for their cooling purpose. I think another valuable piece that was discussed in the work session, and why I want to reiterate it here, is that they talked about data centers have, you know, kind of two primary end spectrums of cooling, water cooled to electric cooled or dry cooled. And that likely, based on the allocations that are requested, this would do some level of combination, hybrid systems of using some levels of, of water cooling to some levels of electrical cooling. So I think for us, that provides a lot of assurances that they're going to want to stay within these allocations. They're not going to want to exceed them, because the end-user agreements are going to be prohibitive for them to do that. As we said, we would be working with them in terms of fines to ultimately, if you do not comply, we get the capacity to turn that off. So the other element, and I just want to make sure, is emphasize that, both for the water and the wastewater, is that these are still well within our allocated amounts for, and, and just in Table 2. And why we put in the, what we would offer, or what we'd be able to do, these are with our planned, a planned natural growth for our community. So take Tract out of it, but what we could reasonably assume is for our growth, not, not based on our past growth and, and changes, because we haven't seen much of that, but if things are going to progress, and we are going to see some natural development happening in our community, where could we end up in, in 10 to 20 years? And we wanted to preserve that capacity that is accounted for in these agreements. So what you see in Table 2 is what we said, we would be willing to allocate while still reserving these, these amounts of water and wastewater for our own purposes, for natural development, residential development, commercial development, other industrial development. So those things were taken into consideration, and what we could reasonably preserve for ourselves without having to make major infrastructure investments. So that was why, in terms of where we ended up with this agreement and these development terms, I think these are really good things for the city. Because we are not investing huge sums of money on the backs of our current users to provide this increased allocation. There's no increase. It's well within what we have today. So we've already invested in these systems, we've already invested in these capabilities. Everything new from this point forward is defined and said. The means that are going to serve their, to serve this site, water and sewer, those are going to be paid for 100% by the developer. The water tower, as I, as I said, it is not 100% use for Tract, so we were feeling equitable in saying that there's a fair share of this that is the city's responsibility. We know we, we can't put 100% of that, so that's why we didn't draft it as 100%. We drafted it to commit to, and I will say this, it's not in the memo, but I will say the, the number that we've agreed to is $5 million to pay for that, that tower. And that will be paid at the time when a building permit is filed, so that, that money is in hand, and we have surety that a project is moving forward, and that component of the tower is being paid for. On the sewer side, where it's different is that our plant, that, we're not adding, changing any other components to the plant, the plant is what it, it is. And in our assessment process, we've determined that the plant needs improvements. And if we were going to any other large-scale developer, and they were coming onto our system as a new user, we would likely do the same thing and, and say, hey, you're coming into our system, we're determining that your request for, for what you need for, for this service is within what we can provide, but in order to keep the rates fair for you moving forward and for the rest of the community, we would like you to invest into that system based on this percentage. And that is the, the dollar amount in which we've determined is what we're asking for, is a capital improvement charge to be paid. So likewise, at the time of the first building permit, there's an amount, the total amount, I will say is 1.6 million, and we're determining how that amount is going to be paid in the final development agreement stages. So there are, between those two items, we are receiving capital dollars to, want to pay for this tower, which I will say now to the plant, rest of the Planning Commission Council is not more in tune and aware to this, because we've talked about in our budget, budgeting plans. A need for something in water storage is, is going to have to take place. The current water storage in that area of town, like I said before, is booster stations for this, for this area, but the rest of that north end of town that also could be served by this is coming from a reservoir that's in underground, and that underground tank is about 50 years old, and definitely in need of major work in there. If this development wasn't happening, that's what we'd be looking at doing. We'd be investing huge sums of money, likely to, you know, up to upwards of a million, who knows how much more, to determine how to make that continue to be used for, for a long period of time. We would be paying for that as a city. So there's a, there's a responsibility of that cost that we're, we're already planning for. And we've already, in our preliminary budgets for next year, already allocated some resources to do that. Now, if this agreement goes through, and it's approved by the council, and everything falls through in the plans, then we can, we don't need to do that, and this tower. We can move all of our plants and designs into this tower and still serve the city with, with that capacity, and we can abandon or remove or find another purpose for, for that other reservoir. So that was a reason, a component of why it's not necessarily just 100% on it. These are things that we went back and forth in terms of trying to find the most equitable, fair thing for both the developer and us. But I do feel like $5 million in the time in which this is going to be built is going to be a very large contribution towards, towards an overall water tower. So that, that in terms of that. One last piece in terms of dollar amounts that I will speak to tonight is on the park dedication fee. So within our ordinances already, we do have a park dedication fee of $2,000 per acre for development in industrial areas, and that is another commitment that is, that Tract is willing to pay for. And that one is, is more on an earlier timeframe. So in lieu of them dedicating land that could be turned into a park, they're paying that, that fee, and that total would be $454,000.
Thank you, John. Any further, as I said, this is informational only, and I think it speaks to our desire to be kept informed on what's going on, and we're reassured, and hopefully that people of Canals and surrounding areas can also look at that and have more clarity, at least, on what is happening.
Just to get confirmation on what you're saying, John, so that 43 million gallons per year, that's on the assumption that they're fully utilizing water for cooling purposes? Because you mentioned dry cooling options, right? Where if they wanted to utilize a mixture of both, but this is under the assumption that 100% of that cooling is utilizing water?
No. No. No, they, they're, they would have 43 million gallons of wa, of water to be allocated to use for cooling purposes. What we, you were in the work session on Thursday, but what they, what was presented, and maybe Trish, if you wanted to speak to it, is that they would likely use some sort of hybrid-style system that uses some components of water cooling and additional components of, of dry cooling. It isn't 100% one or the other. They would look to kind of blending the two to optimize it, because as they explained, and maybe you want to talk about it, but water is more cost-effective, water cooling versus electric cooling, so that by using the, the resources that are allocated, then they have a more cost-effective style.
It, it, just personally, it, it's for like making cotton too, right?
Yes, oh yeah, there, I mean, there's, yes, a small, a small amount that would be used for, for just domestic purposes.
I know, it's just the important things that you need water for.
Yes.
So essentially, if, if they get close to that 43 million, or that 43 million dollar mark, or 43 gallon mark, they could switch off to another way of cooling to make sure that...
Yes, they could, they could just go to strictly dry cooling if they've over, overutilized their, their water. Got you. Just, just fine.
He did a great job, I mean...
I'm, I'm just repeating what I heard, so I, maybe it's a testimony that I can listen, my wife should be watching this meeting.
Other comments, questions? If not, the next meeting is not even on here. At next month, second Monday of next month.
November 10th.
November 10th.
November 10th.
November 10th is the next meeting, if, if needed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Fox, move, second?
Second.
Fox, seconds, to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.